Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Bremerton Chamber of Commerce's Eggs and Issues. This morning, we have invited the candidates for the District 6 Bremerton City Council race. Anna Mochler is here and her challenger, Michael, had a previous engagement already this morning, so he was unable to make it. So we're going to change just a little bit of the format, and I'm going to sit up here with Anna and have a little fireside chat. Hope to take some time and answer the questions from our audience this morning. So if you have any additional follow-up questions, take a moment and you can write them down and hold them up, and somebody from the chamber will come around and get that for you, and we'll see what we can do to get those answered. So we're going to attempt to follow some of the same format. So I will give Anna a few minutes just for an opening statement before we go into question and answer.
Thank you. Well, hi. I'm Anna Mochler. I'm running for Bremerton City Council, District 6. I'm running because I think District 6 needs good representation. We need safe streets and strong communities. I want kids to be able to walk down 13th Street on their way to high school without having to jump into a muddy ditch when cars come speeding down that hill, as they do. Voters have reported speeding all around our district that threaten them, their children, their pets, and all three. I have specific plans to extend the rule of the sea to Bremerton streets. The weaker vessel has the right of way. I will help make communities stronger by organizing block watches to protect against crime and other measures. Running for good government, government that helps people help themselves. Affordable housing is a huge issue in our district. Rents have increased 10% every year over the past five years, and we all know how house prices have gone up. I want to collaborate with Mayor Wheeler and the council to stop homelessness before it happens. With loans and grants to renters who are short of the first, last, and security deposit, they would need to move into a new rental. I want to be part of a government that grants low-interest loans to low-income homebuyers that cover the down payment. I'm running for living wage jobs in a sustainable city. I support union labor and will work to ensure it's a requirement in city contracts. And I'll propose what many cities have, a $15 an hour minimum wage. The foundation of all my proposals is respect for human rights and human dignity. In our daily lives, transparent and responsive government can promote and protect these two essentials for good quality of life. And I pledge to represent our district at City Hall to fulfill all these proposals to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. So we have a little question and answer session. Normally, we'd have one-minute response, and you'd see some paddles. You'll probably still see some paddles to keep us moving along, but I'll let you finish your answer within that.
Thank you.
So let's go ahead and start with our first question. What is your number-one priority in the next four years for the city of Bremerton?
The climate crisis.
The what?
The climate crisis.
And what is your current plan for the climate crisis?
The climate crisis is the number-one priority because it is the emergency that is rushing at us. I have three specific initiatives that I'll propose to combat the climate crisis. The first is to plant more trees to sequester carbon, not just on public land, but to give homeowners and other private landowners incentives to plant and to maintain large trees that, again, sequester the carbon that is threatening us. The second is to increase green manufacturing in the city of Bremerton, manufacturing that not only may produce the components of the new renewable energy society that we have to have, you know, change or die on this one, but also to work with what we have in Bremerton to make sure that we are not contributing to the climate crisis, to make sure that, for example, a thing as simple as eliminating single-use plastic bags. I'm reaching the end? Is that what the yellow paddle is telling me?
Yes.
Okay, there's a third point that I'll tell you later.
You'll get a chance to probably expand on that as some of our questions here kind of back up on us. So following up to that question, what is your number-one priority in the next four years for District 6?
Safe streets and affordable housing. I know it's a two-pronged number-one priority, but there it is. Safe streets and affordable housing. Safe streets specifically using every tool in the box to make sure that everyone can use the streets of Bremerton, that can walk safely, can bicycle safely, can be in a stroller safely, can be in a wheelchair safely. Affordable housing is the other thing that we really need to work on, not just affordable housing, but good quality housing. I've knocked on doors all over my district, and some of them, you can smell the mold when you open the door. That is not fit housing for human beings. So I want to ensure that the warranty of habitability is enforced throughout Bremerton so that people are living in housing that respects their human dignity. As to the affordable housing, I think increasing the minimum wage to $15 an hour is going to be one way to increase affordable housing. And to continue and collaborate with the mayor and council on expanding the program that helps both renters and homeowners, as I described in my opening statement, keep and maintain and improve the quality of housing that they have. Did that answer your question?
Absolutely. I didn't ask these questions. I'm just the fancy reader up here, Anna. All right. So to follow up on that one, how will you balance the needs of the entire city of Bremerton with those of District 6?
Huh, that's an interesting question. The needs of District 6 are the needs of Bremerton. The District 6 suffers, in my opinion, more than others because it has not had the good representation that other districts have experienced. I want to make sure that what we have in the city as a whole is also available to District 6. Sorry, blast of cold air just came on me. I beg your pardon. So that we're not, so that we don't have inequality in Bremerton. And District 6 is the district that, in my opinion, needs the greatest amount of assistance at this time. We need simple things like the access to the Calo Avenue Development Project, improved shopping areas, safer streets, crosswalks, stop signs. Wow, that's just a start. Berms to make sure that, you know, that when the rains come down and start pouring down the streets, to make sure that those don't go into private property. Yeah, that's what I have for this moment.
So he's not here to offset this question, but what makes you more qualified to serve the residents of District 6 over your opponent? What sets you apart?
I've been going to city council meetings since last fall. I've attended them, I've researched them, I've looked at the agendas, I've participated in the public recognition portions, I've attended also the study sessions, and I've read, not the entire comprehensive plan, but most of the comprehensive plan, of the budget. I'm familiar, fairly familiar with the revenue streams and the ongoing expenses. And it's a detail-oriented service job, which is what I have been doing my whole life. I'm good at it, and this is a chance for me to serve. And for the rest of it, Mr. Simpson will have to tell you.
So I follow up with this question. I pulled it out of order that I was going to use because you went down that road. Please describe your involvement with the city council as a citizen up to this point. Is there anything to add onto the answer you just gave us?
No.
Perfect. Figured as much, so I thought I'd get that one out of your way. So in District 6, in your discussion with the voters, what is their biggest concern and how will you fix or satisfy their issue?
Their biggest concerns are, again, there's not one single issue. Affordable housing is huge. Road repair is huge. Road repair is a bit of a conundrum because everybody wants perfect roads and nobody wants to pay for perfect roads. For example, if the new Tim Imman initiative passes in November, we will have enormous budget shortfalls in the city of Bremerton because we depend on that income to do simple things like keep the water on, keep the wastewater flowing, if I can use that word, to repair roads and to, not just potholes, but to plan for repaving, for parks, for everything. So those are the two main concerns of the people of Bremerton. I'd also like to add that a close third is what's going on at City Hall? How can I have a voice at City Hall? How can I trust politicians?
In District 6, what do you see as the biggest impediment that is holding back growth in housing and jobs?
Money.
Care to explain any further?
We haven't got a ton of money. We, it's not a wealthy city. We haven't got a huge tax base. We haven't got those money trees where the money falls from the sky, which is a sad omission of the city planners of the past not to have planted those. So attracting jobs here is not just money, but that is the single greatest impediment. For example, the storefronts that we all see empty downtown and in all of the small business districts around. After those buildings have been vacant for 12 months, then the next owner or the next renter has to bring the entire thing, not just up to the continuously occupied building code, but to the current building code, which requires money and a lot of it, as we all know. So on the other hand, we have a highly trained, highly skilled workforce. We have a great deal of below-market commercial and industrial buildings that we can use to attract light manufacturing, green manufacturing. I think the technical name, for example, the thing that connects your solar panels to PSE, that's, I think the technical name is the thingamajig. Yeah. So perhaps we could be constructing those thingamajigs or similar objects, I'm not an engineer, in Bremerton. Is that answering your question?
Sure. I'm going to expand a little more and take a little time myself. Explain to me how we can fill those gaps as a city of Bremerton to compete with some of our, say, sister cities that aren't as big as we are out here on the peninsula.
Okay, that's a really good question. Let's take Port Orchard for an example, which has 14,000 people compared to our 40,000-plus. Port Orchard has a wealthier tax base. The people who live there are more well-to-do in general. So how can we fill the gaps right here? We can fill them, or we can surely do a really, come pretty close to fulfilling them, through incentives, through outreach, through publicity, through seeking manufacturers who are looking for exactly what we have, at the risk of being repetitive, a highly skilled workforce in situ already here, and the buildings in which they can construct objects. That's another one of those technical terms. Objects that won't pollute our atmosphere, objects that will not only help us in the present, but will help future generations be able to sustain life here on Earth. Obviously, Bremerton can't do all of that, but Bremerton can be a model, Bremerton can be a participant.
Change gears here. Somebody has a question around ferry service. And what are your ideas for improving ferry service here in Bremerton?
More ferries.
Type of ferries?
More ferries of every type. More fast ferries, certainly unimproved reservation system for the fast ferry that gives a fair shot to not just people who can get at a computer for this brief window every month, but, you know, to make sure that there's more equal access to the reservation system. I think having the second fast ferry is useful, but I also would like to see an increase in the regular ferry service. For example, and this is something several voters have mentioned, if you want to go over to Seattle to see a show, to hear a concert, you have either the 10:30 or the 12:50. And we all know how attractive the ferry terminal is at the best of times, and over the past year, it's been deeply unattractive, just because there's nowhere to sit, there's nowhere to even get a cup of tea. So increasing the ferries so that we here could take advantage of the cultural life of Seattle and be able to get back to our homes before 2 o'clock in the morning. Is that answering the question?
It is.
Excellent.
So that one was a lob. Let's get into some deep topics here for some of the residents of Bremerton. So let's start with one that's not quite as far, but has some more passion behind it. Should parking in the downtown area be greatly reduced or greatly expanded? Explain your response.
Okay. Pardon me. Why would we want to reduce parking? I can't even understand that, so I can't really respond to that. Businesses, we're in a car culture right now, so why would we reduce parking and reduce opportunities for businesses to have customers? Expanding parking downtown is a bit of a tricky thing because, as we all know, shipyard workers park downtown. So how are we going to work to remove that pressure? Nobody has a good answer to that. So how we can expand parking in the face of the shipyard workers needing to park near their employment and the shipyard not providing parking, I don't know. What we can do that would make sense is we can start up setting shuttles that go between Park and Ride and downtown on a frequent basis, like every 15 minutes, not every hour. That will enable people to get downtown, walk around, and get back, and be able to bring their giant packages that we hope they will acquire downtown with them back to the Park and Ride.
Good. Well, parking continues to be a hot topic for those downtown.
Yes.
So there are a couple of questions here, and I don't think there's any way to get around it. But we'll start with, what should and HB 1406 funds be directed towards? And are you familiar with House Bill 1406?
I am not.
Okay. So as I've recently learned, that is the, for lack of better terminology, rebate that the state will be given to...
Oh, the sales tax.
The sales tax rebate back to cities and counties to be used towards, as I believe, homelessness, affordable housing, things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
It kind of goes hand in hand with our second question on homeless. What is your understanding of Bremerton's homeless problem and what are your proposals? So let's just kind of tackle that, and I'll throw a third one in there, and I'll let you give some time with the current situation with the Kitsap Rescue Mission and some of the issues surrounding that as well. Kind of throwing it all at once.
Do you want to track some more questions in there? Okay. The first one is, in case you're not familiar with 1406, I wasn't familiar with it by that number. It's, the cities are able to get more of a kickback, just to use plain English, from the sales tax collected as long as they apply it to affordable housing. Perfect. Affordable housing is one of our huge issues. So here we, the mayor Wheeler and the council have already determined that that's what they're going to do with the funds, is to put it into the programs I have meant, assistance to renters in difficulty, assistance to low-income first-time homebuyers, and other, and to also perhaps to help fund the 74 units of supportive housing that are going in behind the Old Beaumont Hotel. What supportive housing behind the Old Beaumont Hotel, you ask? Ah-ha, this is Pendleton Place, which is one of the solutions to homelessness. You like that segue?
I did.
Right? It was good, right? Which is one of the very sensible, very pragmatic, very compassionate responses that Bremerton is making to homelessness. This is a moral imperative. Housing is a human right. We are supposed to clothe the naked, feed the hungry, and house the homeless for Jiminy Christmas. So the 74 units of supportive housing will be of great use. The Triage Center just up behind the Lowe's there off Almyra is another step to helping people who are homeless and in crisis. It's a voluntary admission where they can spend a few days breathing in, not having to worry about what's happening with their stuff, take a bath, rest, walk under the tall trees, tuck into a couple of good meals. I think that these are things we should be doing, and I'm very proud of us that we are. To go on to the Kitsap Rescue Mission, I was very pleased with the Kitsap son for publishing an explanation of why the mayor and the city council may not be able to fund the renovation that KRM requires. And that's because the funds are federal funds. Federal funds can only be spent when the recipient, when the receiver practices nondiscrimination, not just in whom they serve, but also in whom they hire. Kitsap Rescue Mission has a very clear delineation of the faith-based precepts that their employees must have and must follow. And there's no language that I know of in the federal antidiscrimination that allows them to have this language and to require it of all prospective and existing employees. So what it most clearly appears is that Kitsap Rescue Mission, until they can, until they comply with federal nondiscrimination, city of Bremerton, city council cannot give them this federal money. They'd be breaking the law if they gave them the money that's clearly stated, you can use this money, but you must not discriminate. You know, the receiver cannot discriminate. So that's what, you know, and I'm very proud that Mayor Wheeler is working to find new homes for the 26 people who currently reside at Kitsap Rescue Mission. And I'm sure the council will be equally concerned to assist. But that's the situation as it stands right now, according to all my research.
Shifts some gears again here. Here's an interesting question. Should Bremerton go to a city manager style of government?
No.
Or other form of city government versus an elected mayor?
Nope. And I will tell you why.
Please.
I will be less terse. A city manager is, it would be appropriate for quite a small town. But the mayor of Bremerton, it's, I don't know, 50, 70 hours a week? That's a paid position. That's a mayor. Does that answer the question?
Answers it.
Good.
Do you see Bremerton growing and developing similar to Gig Harbor with a downtown waterfront and uptown separation with different growth and development patterns and investment from the city?
You really like these triple-barreled questions, don't you?
I don't write them all.
I don't see, I don't see Bremerton growing the way Gig Harbor grows and has grown, simply because the pressures on Bremerton, not pressures, but the things that shape Bremerton are wholly different. Bremerton is largely planned around the Navy and the shipyard. That's just a fact. Gig Harbor is planned around being more of a bedroom community for Tacoma. It's a, it's a different, different place. If there are industries in Gig Harbor, I have not yet learned of them, you know, major industries, whereas Bremerton is all about industry, manufacturing. Okay, so there was a second part about the varying growth management areas.
Basically, there's a different plan for growth, right? They have these downtown waterfront that's a little more visitor-friendly, and then they have the uptown area that is much more development and has all the big bucks and things like that.
I like what the Bremerton Comprehensive Plan calls for, which is a variety of not just urban growth areas, but of commercial areas that will serve each of these areas. So sort of like satellite downtowns, if you will. Calo Avenue is the one closest to my heart because it's closest to my district, but there are little areas all over Bremerton that could become, you know, hubs, like a place to pick up bread, milk, the newspaper, and of course, my dream, get your shoes repaired. But that's okay. So having it, what you're describing in Gig Harbor sounds to me, and here I'm just speculating, that, you know, you have a sort of vital downtown that's good for tourists and good for residents, and then you have everything around it is residential? Is that correct? Yeah. I don't think that'll work for us.
I have two last ones. They're going to be quick fire, so we got to get a last one. Should the city of Bremerton annex all of its urban growth areas in the next four years?
Yes.
And a quick why?
Well, let's take Rocky Point, for example, because, again, it's an area I know well. Rocky Point is largely septic. Here we have an area that's going out onto shellfish-bearing waters, salmon-spawning waters, and we have septic tanks that are going into those waters. At some point, and it's not very far away, they're going to need to be connected to a regular wastewater system or else go through extraordinarily expensive procedures, this is something I actually know about, to convert their existing septic systems to something that can discharge onto, let's say, an oyster bed. So it makes economic sense for the people of Rocky Point to vote to be annexed by Bremerton. It's a little bit of a drag for Bremerton because it's going to be expensive to convert all of those septics to wastewater. We have inter-local agreements now with emergency services to cross the boundaries into annexed areas, but it would just be simpler and more streamlined to have them be part of Bremerton. Here's a really good example for why I'm getting more passionate about annexation. My neighbor's grandkid goes to the school down at Arsenal and National, where the unincorporate, like, you're going along, you're going along, you have city of Bremerton, you've got a sidewalk, and then suddenly, wham, unincorporated Kitsap County starts. Suddenly, the speed limit is 35, and the sidewalk simply ends in a swath of brush and thicket. So I want our kids to be able to walk safely to and around their schools and not have to be, thread their way through the maze of, this is Bremerton, this is unincorporated Kitsap.
Okay.
Okay.
That wraps up our time for Q and A. I was, I'm going to give you one last, you have, I believe, one minute to do a quick wrap. I'm going to give you one last, you have, I believe, one minute to do a quick wrap-up and tell us why the people of Bremerton should vote for Anna Mochler.
Well, listen to the rest of this, that'll help you. But because I want to represent the district, because I want to represent evidence, because I am good at facts and details, and I'm in this to serve, that's really the main reason that you should elect me. I made many proposals this evening, this morning, sorry, and I will pledge to fulfill them to the best of my ability and to keep my district informed about what's happening on the council, what actions they're taking, what decisions they're making. It's an honor to represent District Six. I like the people, and I can be of use here. So, I hope you will vote for me.
Thank you, Hannah. Thank you all for coming out this morning and being a part of the Bremerton Chamber of Commerce's Eggs and Issues. Thank you to Be Cat for putting this on air for us.
Thank you.
And make sure and remember, you have, your voter guides have hit the mail, and ballots should be in your mailbox October 18th to be returned by November 5th. So, get out the vote. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you.[1784.41][1784.41][applause]